That's the form it would take. It is rather conventional, raising the building of the rather regular square form. And it's not a difficult building to raise.
Okay, so whatever you have that you can suffice and staff can look at, that we can look at, it helps. I noticed in your plans, you have modifications of sprinklers. So you're adding more sprinklers to the system? Is that sound right?
No, no, it's just that in the, on the main floor, in the main room, is that we have a design for the ceiling which would eliminate the visual aspect of the piping.
In the center.
And we're also adding an accusal to it at the same time. And then there's one unfortunate maiden sprinkler line that I think comes through the corner of the, that's basically nice to reroute it.
Okay, so no changing capacity?
No, the, I mean, like all remodel jobs, you have to relocate heads and things like that, but.
I just know I'm thinking of pressure.
The building has a, essentially the building is sprinkled now.
Yep, an existing system in there. I just didn't know if you were adding sprinkler heads, we're having an issue somewhere else that sprinkler heads are an issue. We don't have enough pressure. Matter of fact, it's in the park. So these are things that we're looking at. So that's why I'm asking if you're adding more heads, do we need to consider potential pressure issues? And that's, you're answering my question, and we'll look into the rest of it. Duration of the project? I didn't see a duration, or what do you have scheduled as impact schedule? For how long, project phase one? Can we talk phase one being the first level and phase two being the second?
I'd have to go back to our estimate, which was rather comprehensive in how many months the contractor had, you know, superintendent and had a, on the job. And we did not know at the time we did the estimate how it would proceed as far as phasing. So he did his estimate in two phases, and so I'd have to go back to up at that.
Okay, because obviously, project impact, a lot of things going on in the park, it kind of like helps us make decisions. Going into cost breakdown, did you break down cost phase one, lower phase, and then cost phase two?
Yes. Yeah, it is broken down. I'm sorry, I didn't know what it was time you were going into details of it at a meeting like this.
I think it's page four of the presentation. It's a very generic summary. I think the initial bid that we got from the consultant was 26 pages long, which we did not provide.
Okay, phase one, phase two. So 1.2 million, 1.267340, phase one, or 1.596849, and then 912. Okay. So mentally, you can break this project down?
Yes. Well, our initial estimate was done over a year ago, so we updated it recently based on the cost indexes in the engineering news record and a lot of certain contingencies.
So, another question, occupancy. Did we, do we have any idea on what potential occupancy of these areas? How many people we can legally have in these areas after we've improved?
How many people?
Yeah, I, just knowing, a lot of times you build to a certain percentage of occupancy being safe.
It would be based on the square footage in the main room on the first floor, and I forget what that is, but, you know, requiring two exits, which we have, and, you know, be common and allow that to post the occupancy.
Okay. Yeah. So then I, another thing that I guess, and I didn't see any, and maybe it's just me, but I've been in there enough times to know, the smell. Is anything being done about the smell? When we're talking about facility and upgrading, it is a barn. Do we have anything that, ventilation, anything?
Well, that whole first level was.
I'm trying to, you know, we're talking about a venue, and when this is ultimately done, and I just don't.
It smells horsey.
You can say that.
But they haven't been any horses in it for a long time.
Right now, as far as the HVAC system, right now, it has an electric system for heat and cooling, which is rather inefficient. And the building does not have gas service, so our estimate anticipated bringing a gas service to a building and putting new equipment and getting rid of that big unit that's hanging on the outside wall, which is rather attractive. And also, it's, when it's in the, you know, heating mode, it's expensive use electricity.
In, on that same tone, knowing that that back area, the flooring, and I know we're gonna have some difficulty turning, I know some of our smell is probably because horses have been in there, and what they do is what they do, and it's still in.
You don't think that's part of the charm of the building?
Even to the Folgers estate, no.
That's part of the historic fabric.
Just trying to figure out if.
We'll do something with it.
Okay. All right, so I guess as far as questions, I'll go ahead and concede that right now I don't have any more questions, because, but I do have somebody that, and I, as far as summarizing my thoughts, I think we have an audience member that wants to speak on this particular, ask a question on this subject. Oh. Oh, okay, so we're good on actual questions, I think. Apologize. Well, I know my other fellow council members have already kind of said what their kind of piece is related to it, and I will say, in going over everything, and I think timing is obviously an issue here as well, the concept of redoing the carriage house, well, sure, we want to restore our building and keep all the building. It's a beautiful building. In the design aspect, I walked away reading everything, and I think I walked away with really having to have more questions than I really wanted to have. I, you know, it's more of an overview and a very light book.
I'd be happy to participate in any kind of study session we want to have on the details of our estimate and the work.
It, it, I think that it, when it is completed, as you guys have identified it, it would be a beautiful venue. I have some concerns related to how we move into the master plan related to the park and how we can change and make that venue better. And I think that that's part of the goal with the way we're looking at the master plan. I think that some of the questions that I've asked related to foundation, et cetera, et cetera, I do know that, I've heard from a lot of people, even when we went through the master panel related to the park, "Don't touch anything, don't touch anything." And I, I have a concern that we create another venue that in fact will create rentability, and since we did not analyze, which wasn't part of the master plan, because you guys inhabit it, I get it. But I now see a two-level structure that in fact could, that leads me to half of my questions on how many people are going to be there and how many cars are going to go with those people. If we're going to do a two-level facility, how many people are going to be with how much impact to the parking, which is one of our biggest issues related to the park? We have people that want us to build a dog park, which again will take some more parking. So we're really running out of parking spaces because we only added, what, maybe 20, if that.
It took some away.
And they took some away. So I, you see, so I.
They put some back.
I, I have some concern related to it. I also now have become a little bit more familiar with the fact that it can be a two-phase project. I'm not much into, and tell me if the elevator is for ADA compliance for the second story only. We are compliant, once you do all the work, phase one, compliant downstairs. Is that sound correct?
That's right.
Okay, so the elevator is being added solely for compliance for ADA access for use of a second story. Is that sound correct? Okay. So if in fact, we didn't want to do second story, we don't have to change the aesthetics of the exterior to add the elevator. Correct?
That's right.
Okay. All right, so that kind of helps me think how we're doing and moving forward. So with that, I think for myself personally, I think I want to gather more information, the concept of supporting the fact of redoing, or, I don't know if I support this project per se as it's outlined, the way you've identified it. I may be supportive of phase one and redoing the lower level and upgrading the lower level facility at the cost as you've identified here, but I'm still not ready to make that decision until I kind of see how the master plan for the park and all the other things. I actually agree with you. I think it could be a beautiful venue, but I also think that how we lay out that park impacts everybody related to the park, and I think that you have a beautiful area that's isolated, that we could make some changes in the master plan related to how we move some things around to make it a better venue. But one of the obstacles we have is parking, because it's not pop, anybody that knows the Civic Center, it's not popping out of it, and going down is not an option, at least cost-wise. Maybe on the menu, but it, right now isn't. So that being said, those were, those are my concerns, and so since I'm kind of the newest guy that just got briefed on it, I think I, you know, in the concept fact, I can't even say based on this initial project, more information, but of course, we'd all be, and it's not one person here that I would say wouldn't be supportive of the building itself.
Through the chair. So to kind of wrap up, I mean, I think that maybe we could receive the presentation, receive the report, and put it in the mix with the park master plan study, that we understand that they're going to come back to us and with some other information, additional information about the uses of the park. And then also, take a look at, in the budget study process that we're going to be holding over the next two and a half months, you know, see where the budget items might be, and then we'll just move on from there. So I think that would be just, I think that would be adequate for tonight.
Please.
Well, the recommendation, I assume the action, of course, there was, the action today from this was not to agree any funding or anything like that, it was to hear your presentation and decide if appropriate whether or not we would like to, in the future, have the mayor sign some sort of endorsement saying we endorsed the project. It's not necessarily, it has to have any sort of specifics, phase one, phase two, or any financial commitment, but just, I think the dames were wondering whether or not we would even support them, and I think that that's really the action that staff had asked us to make a decision on tonight.
Please. I'm gonna ask one more question, because I don't know if you guys have discussed it, and I made the comment, are you guys, are the dames, have you discussed the willingness to separate phase one? If you guys get the ability to do phase one period, have the dames discussed that as an option, or is it all or nothing?
Our goal is to do the entire carriage house, so it is complete and restored and renovated, but we will go forward with as much money as we raise and do as much as we possibly can.
Okay. So with what Bill had mentioned, and with my lingering still questions, I think that until I get some further information from you, or staff, we have the ability to look at a few additional things, we can hold, again, it's not that anyone here is opposed to the project, or opposed to the carriage house itself, or upgrades to the facility. It's, that's it. Timing may be an issue, funding is clearly, you know, an issue, and we have the budget allocation time. It's a little bit premature for me to say I'm all for this project, because this project may be different if I agree to it. So if the sole answer is, do we agree to the carriage house, that's not what you're looking for. You want this project as kind of endorsement, and I can't do that.
I am, actually, sorry, I have him squeezing him out.
No.
I would prefer that you have all the information you need to support the project, because it's a, it's an important project, and you should have the information. What I have down is what you need, that you need more information from us based on the foundation and seismic concerns. I'm not sure if you want a copy of our detailed estimate that we got from the same builder who did the Folgers estate. We had him go through and give a very conservative estimate to us for the price, and I'll give you everything I have. It has to be an informed decision, because with your endorsement, it's gonna, it's gonna skyrocket us, so we want to make sure you've got it all, so you can support us.
And believe me, if anybody here has done a big project and some of us in this room have, the last thing we want is change order. And so I think that to reduce the towns' feelings, that we don't, we don't want to get hit, we don't want to jump into a project and end up doubling and tripling, and then all of us being upset because we're all bleeding money, and your guys are out there knocking on every door three times to get them to write some more checks, and we've gotten no more money. So I think that if we can get it to us, information to staff, help us organize any additional things that we potentially want, to reduce our potential, you know, concerns down the road, then we can make a better decision. So that's where I come with it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Who would you want us to work with?
Through George, please.
Through George.
Through George.
To that point, Mr. Mayor, may I ask for some clarification here? Are you looking for all of the detailed architectural, structural plans and specs to be delivered to the council so you can sit down at the bottom and talk about it? Or are you looking for staff to conduct some independent analysis of their effort?
I would prefer that the professionals, call it staff, do that and give us some idea that, you know, you feel comfortable enough that the seismic reports or whatever those have, have been done. I think that's the goal.
Well, that does require time and staff time to do that sort of, but if that's the council's direction, we can certainly, once we get those, come back with a, what plan check would be, because all of that would happen in the plan check process.
I think that's, I think that's a little bit asking, I think that's asking staff for too much time at this time. I think what we could do is, again, receive the presentation, put it into the master plan, the park master plan.
In our discussion.
Process, in our discussion, and then look at, go through the budget process and see where that comes out. And at, and at that point, we'll have, make a more informed decision of how to endorse this project or support it.
Okay, I agree with that, and if you in fact have structural reports and you can forward them to them, and then we can, you know, I mean, I've been in enough projects to know that sometimes those reports can't be found when we finally ask for them. So if it is, something does exist, and the licensed structural engineer has looked at it, I might be a little bit more comfortable that somebody.
We definitely can get that. We definitely can.
Yeah, we'll take whatever information they have. We'll have some love to pronounce.
Drawings now are rather detailed design drawings. They're not construction drawings, but they, but we have reviewed it with a structural engineer, and I think the best thing would be to sit down with somebody from the staff and explain everything, where we are, what our thinking was.
Perfect. That 30 minutes is good, and George?
Yeah, we can do that, but how would you like that brought back to the council?
Simply as we come back through and discussion, as we move forward in the budget, as we're gonna consider that item, I think that that's, is that, are you telling me?
I'm just, still a little, you know, perhaps.
Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah. I think there, my approach is more emotional than your approach. Your approach is more technical, which is good, and I think we need the technical, but I'm ready to support the project. I think that you ought, that the dames ought to give the staff what they have, and you ought to take a look at it. We're not ready to make a decision around economic support, but I would like to be able to encourage the dames to go forward with their project. So whatever you need to review to be able to support that, on, to encourage them to go into their fundraising effort, I think that would be appropriate for us to do. I, I do think that it should be part of the master plan, and we should not have to judge it independent from the master plan. I understand that you have this as your mission and your project, and that's fine. I'm not, you know, suggesting anything different, but it should be incorporated into the master plan, and I have said that to the Park and Rec Commission when I met with them. I think it's an important project for the park, and the master plan, as we discussed in our study session, should include some assessment of the facilities and what we use them for, and it really hasn't.
So staff can prepare a kind of summary based on what they submit, and we can bring that back to you after looking at their, not their construction drawings, but their design drawings, our picture drawings, come back and say, yeah, this is, this meets the basic elements of the building, this is all the safety issues, et cetera, but that, that's not the plan check process, and it's not gonna address all the sort of details.
Yeah.
So that's all you have when you go through the budget process.
Yeah. That'll give us more time to assess it, too.
Yeah, let's, let's run with that.
Yeah, the budget thing is gonna be part of, any, any financial contribution is gonna be part of our discussion on the budget, which isn't gonna be finalized until June, but.
Right.
But I think that all the dames were asking for tonight, and I think your staff report was, get enough feel-good that we could say, yeah, we would encourage that so they could start their process, and I don't think anybody up here hopes that it would interfere in any way with the fundraising for the, you know, for the Newtown Center, which as everybody said is first and foremost, so we want to do that, but I think that if we could find a way to let them have their endorsement, quote unquote, the timing, we wouldn't be committing into timing or funding or anything like that until we're ready to do that.
Just, I apologize to two of my council members that I'm probably, I'm still at that point where I say, based on what I know and what's been submitted to me, is a project that has a two-phase, and that's what you want, two phases. I am not willing to support two phases at this particular point without more information and then addressing the potential impacts of increasing the use of that building to a two-story potential venue, i.e. more impacted park, i.e. more impacted parking. So these are all things that influence me to frankly kind of say no. Okay? But I may be interested in a single phase as it goes forward, but I'm not still at that point, because I'm still concerned related to the foundation issues, which some people might take lightly, but those are big ticket items that change the whole project. So while I agree with you do want us to support it, I think that we will come to some conclusion related to it, and I think we have the avenue, and I just honestly don't think that at this point I can say that, you know, ready now, because as it's submitted, so.
Okay.
Okay? Apologize.
Well, I just want to say on behalf of the dames that we just thank you for your time and your thoughtful consideration, and we'll, we'll be in touch. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank all the dames for all the effort to this point, and we'll continue to work together. Okay, let's go ahead and move to item number E. Evolve, please. Reforming Prop 13. You have a presentation that we're all waiting to see.
All right. Good evening. My name's Anya Margolis, and I'm the organizer for Evolve. It's we're a local nonprofit that works to increase funding for public education in California. And I'm excited to be here tonight to talk to you about our resolution to reform Prop 13, so thanks for having me. I'll make it as snappy as I can. So we're at a crossroads here in California with per pupil education funding coming in at 49 out of 50 states in the country, and municipalities around the state struggling to fund essential services. We have two options. We can cut services further, or we can generate more revenue. Now, for those of us who believe that our state needs more revenue to provide adequate funding for education, public services, then we believe the fairest way to provide that revenue is by reforming Proposition 13. So the reform we are advocating for will not change Prop 13 for homeowners, home renters, apartment owners, or apartment renters, nor will it remove current protections for small business owners. And this, this is important. Our campaign is focused solely on making non-residential commercial property owners pay their fair share. After all, Prop 13 was passed 36 years ago to help people, not large corporations. So in California, 72% of property taxes come from residential property, while commercial property owners only pay 28%. This was not the case prior to Prop 13. And as you can see from this graph here in San Mateo County, Prop 13 has actually created an even greater discrepancy in property taxes. In 1972, the property tax burden for residential property owners was 65%, while non-residential paid 35%. You'll see by 2010, homeowners shouldered 81% of the burden, and commercial property only paid 19%. The problem is that under Prop 13, all property in California is only reassessed when it changes hands. In California, people buy and sell homes every day, the average period of time for homeownership is about 10 years, and large commercial properties rarely change hands, so they are rarely, if ever, reassessed. So the law that was set up to benefit people is actually benefiting large corporations the most. So this is an example, the Walt Disney Corporation is still paying property taxes for Disneyland based on its 1975 value. This is about five cents a square foot, while most California homeowners are paying about 40 cents a square foot. So not only do homeowners have to pay eight times more in property taxes than the Walt Disney Corporation, but our cash-strapped state is losing out on millions of dollars every year in desperately needed revenue just from this one property. Another example is Chevron. Chevron owns vast amounts of property all across the state, and since most of that property has been owned from before 1978, Chevron is undertaxed by nearly $1 billion a year. That's $1 billion a year that should be going to our schools and our public services. So these are two corporations that can easily afford to pay their fair share, and because of loopholes in Proposition 13, they will never have to. Under our current system, Chevron and Disney are going to continue to pay property taxes based on 1975 levels indefinitely. This was clearly not the original intent of the law. In every other place in the country, commercial property is reassessed regularly to market value. And in fact, beyond just regular reassessment, 40 out of the 50 states tax their commercial property at a higher rate than residential property. So this means that their citizens aren't consistently asked to foot an increasingly disproportionate share of the bill for schools and public services. So what this looks like in California is that we now have the highest income in sales taxes in the country. Local governments are forced to rely on funding their schools and public services with partial taxes and bond measures. And even so, parents are asked to fork over more and more just to fund their children's public education. So this only works as a stopgap measure in places where parents can afford it, but this is not the case everywhere, and I think we can all agree, we all want the children of today to have access to the same high quality of education that California was once known for. And, you know, furthermore, with working people contributing more and more just to fund our schools and public services, there's less money in their pockets to spend and stimulate the economy. We must reform Prop 13 so we can adequately fund our schools and public services without continuing to shift the tax burden onto individuals. It's time to put our state on par with the rest of the country. So the good news is, most Californians agree. A new Public Policy Institute of California poll shows that 59% of likely voters agree that commercial property should be reassessed regularly as it is in every other place in the country. Even though politicians in Sacramento don't seem to realize this, making corporations pay their fair share is actually something the majority of Californians support. By passing this resolution, your council will be getting involved in the essential statewide conversation about restoring tax fairness that is transpiring as we speak. So already 65 school boards and city councils from all across the state, including right here Menlo Park Schools and Portola Valley Elementary School District, have already adopted this resolution and begun the important work of making it clear to Sacramento. We must find a way to make Prop 13 work for the people it was meant to protect. Thanks for your time.
Let's bring back questions from council first, please. Thank you. Any council members have a question?
No, I appreciate the presentation, and Mule and I have had a couple of conversations on this already, and thank you for all the detailed documentation you gave us. So I, for one of our, in favor of your resolution, I think that the situation we have with Prop 13, it has caused the burden on, on all of our taxpayers, and it our taxpayers, and it is essentially being somewhat exploited, I think, even on the private sector in some manners, and maybe there's even more reform that needs to happen. But I sincerely think that this is a great way to start, so I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. Question? Council member, please.
So, thank you. Very detailed, and it is a worthy goal. Question about, I know I saw lots and lots of school districts, and you did mention Portola Valley and Menlo Park School District, but how many other jurisdictions, councils have endorsed this and signed this resolution here in San Mateo County?
That, that's a great question. So we started our campaign, we started our campaign with school districts. We started about a year ago. So there are now 54 school districts, and at the beginning of this year, we launched our city council campaign. So there are, I believe, so there's a complete list there in your packet.
It's on Brisbane.
Brisbane.
Is that, is that a Brisbane City Council?
Yes, Brisbane City Council.
Is that Burlingame City Council?
No, no.
That's Burlingame School District.
Yes, and I, I believe the only city council so far in San Mateo is Brisbane.
Okay.
No. Portola Valley is... A city council. There's a number of school districts in San Mateo that have already adopted this. But, yeah, like I said, we're just starting the city council campaign, and Brisbane is the first in San Mateo.
I'm gonna tear on that same question. Thank you. How many, and I know you're probably not gonna know the answer, 100% residential communities, do you have the city councils supporting this?
Such as Hillsborough.
Right.
And Mr. Yum.
Great question. Yeah, so, so you would be the first 100% residential city council to, to join this, this movement. Piedmont School District was one of the early adopters of this resolution. And the reason we believe this is important for even a 100% residential community is that high sales tax and income tax damage, hurt everyone in California. So, you know, we saw in 2012, income tax on the highest earners go up 3%. So that takes money out of your residents' pockets, and it hurts the economy. So we're gonna continue to have budget deficits with regard to our schools and just about everything else, and we can decide either to continue taxing people out of California or to make large corporations pay fair market rate as they do in every other place in the country.
Please, Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Question?
That answered my question. I'll, I'll wait for my comments to see if there's any public...
Any other questions? Walter, question?
Walter Sleep, I live here in Attleton. You were very up, okay? That's, applaud you. However, I didn't get the package, so I'd like to know what the resolution is. I was expecting you, after all of introduction, to paint the resolution up there.